...in our invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President.
Oh, yeah, we ask your guidance on this meeting tonight, for your wisdom for the council and the mayor. We ask your protection on those who protect us both at home and abroad, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Everybody has a copy of the agenda in front of them?
I'm going to approve the agenda. Second.
Second, the council and the district, and all those in favor, please raise your hand. Excuse me. Our first, Ms. Valerie Ben- Darrow from Phoebe Putney, if you guys were coming up now.
I'm taking pictures.
Mayor, council, thank you for inviting us. We take great pride in being able to come before you and talk about the opportunity of bringing some AEDs to our loved police department here in Pelham. This is being made possible from a grant from what we call our Community Visions Program. And we have given away, what Valerie, maybe over? Well, to be exact, let me let you say exactly what it says here.
About $4,000?
Yeah, yeah. We've given away since 2004 more than, I think, 60 AEDs throughout our area. And so we're very pleased. You know that 90 minutes is the window of time emergency medical professionals have for treating a heart attack. But if one-third of that time is spent transporting patients, then a patient's cardiac treatment is not only reduced, but it's also delayed, putting the patient at greater risk. So these AEDs really help to reduce the time of action and reaction in saving one's heart. And Mr. Richards is here, who is from TriMed, which is the company that we purchased these from. So we're just pleased and honored to have the opportunity to bring this life-saving device to our police department. And it was at the request of Chief McCormick, letting us know that there was really a need. And we're just happy to meet that need. Any other need I might say? Here in Pelham, just feel free to call and let me know. And whatever we can do, we'd be more than happy to do. Chief, would you like?
Yeah, we're real grateful to Phoebe for this. We have the training. We just sent through jailers and the officers to training. Had no device. And not much prospect on getting any, but we, Phoebe really come through for us. And we really do appreciate it. Tremendous help. And you may want to explain a little bit how these things work.
Lay down, bud. Very simply, somebody goes into cardiac arrest, which actually happens a lot more than you think, because about 350,000.
I think it happens to you at the restaurant. Excuse me.
See, I seen the bill. Actually, it happened to me in Albany. Many of y'all are familiar with El Vaquero Restaurant is in Albany. I live around the corner from it. My wife and I was in there back about six months ago. And a man was there with his family, an older fellow. He was the granddaddy of the table. He got up, went and paid the bill, come back and sitting there with one of his grandkids in his lap, drank an iced tea, and collapsed, sitting at the table. And by the time EMS got there, it was too late. I jumped up and ran to him. Two nurses from Phoebe were there. They had worked on him. And I turned to my wife, because I actually carry one of these in my truck all the time for demo. And I said, "Go get my AED." And she looked at me, and she says, "Where in my car tonight?" I didn't have it. And the man died right there in front of me. Doing all we could do was CPR. The only way to straighten out a K or R cart rhythm is with current. And that's what this does. It basically, in layman's terms, now the circuit breaker trips on your panel box, it's halfway. What do you have to do? You have to shut it all the way to off, then back on. That's what this does. It takes a heart that's not working right. And momentarily, when that energy hits it, it shuts that heart still. And it's in milliseconds. If the heart's strong enough and let the current body's strong enough, it'll start back up on some form of normal sinus rhythm. And that's what this does. It's like tripping the circuit breaker back. So, very simply, I was going over this with the chief a while ago. That's the on-off switch. You open it up. And from there, listen to the voice prompts.
Stay calm. Follow these voice instructions. Make sure 911 is called now.
Not to be ugly, but the firemen say they're police-proof, and the firemen say they're fireproof. So, it works out good both ways. But that's, that's as simple as it gets.
True thirds. Guys, again, we're very proud of your governing and your leadership. And if there's anything that we could do to assist, please feel free to let us know.
We certainly do appreciate those. You able to get a picture, you know, right on the other end?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, let's go.
I'm just happy you presented.
Turn it, turn it around.
The other way.
The other way. Thank you all, buddy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Valerie says you can get him home now.
He said he was going to follow me out. We could only trust that. He's coming back.
Don't get too bad, I'll be right over here.
My dog.
All right, Mr. Dan Bollinger, if you would, talk about the redistricting.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate y'all and that and my down. And I appreciate us being able to do this for you. This is our first time with redistricting. Generally, as a general rule, the legislative redistricting office in Atlanta accomplished this on behalf of the city. This year, because of some issues, I guess, and budget cuts, they were not able to do that. And we kind of stepped up and tried to do it as inexpensively as possible. We acquired some software called Business Analyst. It allowed us to download not only the 2000 data, but the 2010 census data. And that's just the basics from where you start. And I understand you've had these districts for a lot of years. I don't know how long you've had them. But the initial thing you do is determine if you need to redistrict. And that's determine if you have a 5% variance one way or the other in any one district and population basis. So you have to be within 5% one way or the other. Your prime number, I think, is 1949 right now. And that's, that's the number that you're looking for. These are your current, this is your current district, the way it's set up. And right now, you've got 2,500, over 2,500 in District 2. You only got 1,360, leaving you 589 difference. And that's, you have to make that change somehow. Now, what we've done also is with these new maps is actually put the residences of your current city council on there so you can see where they are. And I've already heard some discussion from some of you about one district or another. The key for you all here, and somebody asked me earlier if I was going to make a recommendation. I will not. But the key for you all here is to look at these maps very carefully. And am I correct? I understand you've received the smaller versions of these maps already, so you had a chance to study them. Is to come up with an option that you're comfortable with, that stays within that 5%. And I had one city that chose an option, they could have had an option of 0% difference. But they chose an option with about a 4% difference because it worked out better politically and geographically for the entire community. Smaller cities doesn't really make that much difference. But if you look for communities of interest, neighborhoods, and that type of thing, try and hold that together for the census. Now, once you look through these and come up with an option, it's my understanding, and I guess Randy's not here tonight?
He's coming, but he's running late.
He's running late. And I don't want to speak for him, because he may have a different, because I've heard a couple of different attorneys tell a couple of different versions. But the thing that you would have to do is choose an option, publish that option, hold a public hearing. And then, at your next regularly scheduled council meeting, you could adopt a map. And choose that map, that's your first reading. Then your next regularly scheduled council meeting, following that, you would also have a second vote on that map. Giving people, everybody have an opportunity to have some input on it as well. And the thing I think you all have to consider is, these are also the districts for the Board of Education. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you probably want to somehow or another coordinate with them on these districts to make sure, you know, that they feel comfortable with them as well. We have no recommendation one way or the other. We just, we presented you some options, looking at numbers. Now, the way we do this is with that software. The census is tabulated in what's called a census block. And a census block, for example, may be this, these two blocks right here, okay? And then another one may be this block right here. It doesn't necessarily have the same number of people in it and that type of thing. So Heidi, Jimmy, I think you know well, and a fellow of mine stabbed by the name Jeff, they really get to play cutouts and dolls with these things and just take a census block and move it here. And when we do that, the software automatically re-tabulates the population and the racial mix of that population. The key here is, you cannot change, in order for it to comply with the Department of Justice, you cannot change a minority, majority-minority district to a majority-white district. That's key. If you've got a majority-minority district, and I think you do with this district up here, then you cannot change that to where it would be a majority-white district. It has to stay a majority-minority district. All, you know, that's, to me, that's fair, that's fine. The difficulty then comes in, where do you change people from one district to another? And how you go about that? And I think you have to think of that again, politically, geographically, and socially, in the neighborhoods that people work together. That being the case, we have drawn four options for you. And I think some of you have had a chance to look at these. Now, if these are not acceptable, I can bring a computer projector, put that program in, and we can sit, literally sit here and on the fly, change these options so that you can see what the, what changes we make if you want, if these are not, none of these are acceptable to you. If one of them is acceptable to you, that's great. You know, schedule your public hearing, go with whatever Randy tells you to do. And I, you know, I don't want to act like I'm an attorney, because I'm not. But these are what I've heard other attorneys tell these people in the past. It's been a very successful program for us, and it's, I think it's been a big help. Even though the counties do not necessarily need for this to happen, for us to do this for them, because the legislative redistricting offices are going to do the counties. Some of the counties are asking us to come in and do this for them before they go to Atlanta to meet with the legislative redistricting office. Because it gives you an opportunity to actually have your own input into this. Prior to this, this computer program is not available. And a woman by the name of Linda Makers, who's now at the University of Georgia, she's no longer at the legislative redistricting office, was an absolute wizard. She could do these things, unbelie- and, I mean, she's just, she's a mathematical wizard in her head as well as seeing how these census blocks work. So it was, she really did a great job. She's no longer there, but she's using the same program as a consultant now that we're doing. So, that being the case, I'd be happy to answer any questions or go into any discussion with you about these maps.
The 5% is not a magic number, is this something?
5% is a magic number in that you can't have a variance in population of more than 5% from one district to another.
Well, is there more than one of these that meets that?
Yeah, all four of these will meet that. All four of the options that I've given you will meet that. Only the current map does not have, does not within the 5%. I think the variance was, what, 30% on the current map? Did it, am I making myself clear?
Number, number three.
Pardon?
The number four is the one that closest to, yeah.
Close, yeah, it became, that's one person out on each district, if you were to choose that one.
And when we decide, that's not, I mean, when it's, who gives the final okay on it?
You do.
So it then go beyond us?
Yeah.
I thought Department of Justice had.
Well, I'm sorry. You, you choose the map that goes to the Department of Justice.
That has to be okay.
What I'm telling you, what I'm really giving you is the scenario, I think, that will meet the Department of Justice guidelines.
Sure.
Does that make, that make, help you?
And so you think any of the?
Any of the four will meet the Department of Justice guidelines. But it's, you all have to look at them from your own personal standpoint and see what it's like.
I understand.
And this doesn't take into account or have anything to do with having three members in District 1 versus four members representing District 2?
I think that's in your charter, if I'm, if I'm correct. That you will have four members from District 2 and three members from District 1. Isn't that in your charter?
Yes.
If we go ahead and move on, this, when will this redistricting take?
It will not take place for the upcoming election. You cannot get it approved, Mr. Davis, by the time of the upcoming election. So the recommendation that I've heard from the other attorneys is, you go ahead and qualify in your current districts and go from there. Then the next election, it would happen. Now, there's a concern, just a concern right now, that particularly where you're at this, this far, that DOJ Jason may come back and say, "Hold a special election." But there's, I don't, I don't think that'll happen. I don't think they're going to force that cost on you. But, so now you qualify in your current districts, but you need to go ahead and get this done for the Department of Justice and go ahead and move on.
The way we're, the way everybody is right now, nothing, none of those would affect anybody that's sitting up here.
Here's, here's a scenario, Billy, that I think could happen. If you had someone who, say, was, was up here and filed right now, and then got moved into District 2 or lost without being in District 1, now they could file on you and cause a problem and cause a special election. But I really don't see that scenario happening in a lot of cases. It may in someplace like Atlanta, if you won't have that in a lot of cases.
You're all doing Mitchell County as well. You mentioned other counties that you're, you're all doing.
Yeah, Mitchell, they've asked us to come in to yours as well. Thomasville, by Frank, Thomasville is the only city so far that has not had a redistrict. And they were just under, they were like 4.89% on one of their districts. So they've not had to redistrict.
About the county.
Well, the county's going to change. You got to change, I think, move their districts around a little bit. But it's not, it's not like a redistrict in here where you're limited, you know, what you can do.
Thank you for the information.
Yep. Dan, can you tell us about the meetings we need to hold in the future to accomplish this? Don't we have to do this at two regular meetings? That's okay. I don't believe Randy or not, or you didn't hear me, we did talk about that. You need to hold a public hearing next. That's your, once you choose a map, hold a public hearing. We'll actually leave these big maps with you. City of Camilla chose to do their public hearing by simply publishing in the newspapers that the maps were available at City Hall and leaving a comment box, giving people the time they can come in anytime they wanted to, when they pay their order bill or whatever, and look at it and make comments. I don't think they got any comments. But that was just as good as a public hearing as anything out there. And then at your next, like I said, the next regularly scheduled council meeting, you would take your first vote, and then the following, meeting following that, you would take your second vote. And that, that makes it official.
So they didn't have an advertised public hearing?
They did. Now, Dawson did advertise and hold a public hearing right prior to a, the first council meeting where they adopted it. So you can do it that way as well. But I kind of like that idea, taking these maps, putting them up in City Hall, and letting everybody take a look at them. Because I think it gives more people an opportunity to at least add some input in it. You haven't had any phone calls lately? You need a few, Bobby. Does that help you?
Yes, thank you.
Do you have any questions for Dan, anybody? I appreciate you coming tonight.
Okay. I'll probably stay around and listen for a while, but I'd rather leave pretty early in the morning, so I'll sneak out. But I'll just leave these here, Doug, and we can put those out there. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Edwards, the group that came in, they represent the Community Outreach Program that recently opened up in Pelham. And the director, Ms. Edwards, is here to like to speak to the council.
Will you approve a change on the agenda for that? Or is it just?
Just take it from the public, it'd be fine.
Hello, how's everyone?
Hey.
Hi, my name is Sharon Edwards, and I'm the director of Community Outreach Training Program here in Thomasville. I'm from Thomasville, we're here in Pelham. Pastor in Albany, but we're here in Pelham. And today was our official full day opening. Basically, we were, just an announcement, serve some refreshments, just to let the community know that we're here. And the services that we offer, I do have business cards, however, we do have a packet here. The services that we're going to offer here is job training. We don't guarantee placement, we don't guarantee placing you in a job, but we do offer the skills. We basically have about 14 computers that we have set up for the community, that they can come in. Job training, we get job training skills. We help with resume creation, we help with interview techniques. We actually have a room set up for mock interviews. So we invite you to come by and visit our facility. We're the old artillery school, 28 Green Berth Southwest. We're reading our building from Pelham School Board, which has been so gracious to us. And we, it took us about a good month or so to actually get set up. We had the opportunity to visit the food bank, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Uvans there, our family bank. And I just want to, first of all, thank Pelham for just being so gracious to us. We found that the services are needed here in this area. Not only we offer job readiness skills and a job creation plan, but we also have a youth mentoring program. It's called Stairway to Success. And it's going to be for young men and young ladies. Louis Stevens, he's worked with the Department of Juvenile Justice in Tallahassee. He'll be working with the young men. We also be working with Relief from the Streets, which is Rico Walker has a program there in Thomasville. It's very successful. And also Mr. Anthony Brown from Brooks County, he has the truancy intervention program there. It's about eight years old, so it's a very successful program. So we'll be working collaborative efforts with them. We also be working with the Department of Labor. I've also met with Sandra Clayton, Camilla, Department of Labor, as well as Mr. Brayton in Thomasville Department of Labor. So we're going to partner with them. We actually have computers set up, three computers that will be assigned for job, job search. So we, we actually are partnering with the Department of Labor, so you can come in. They can actually come in after training, and we'll work with them one-on-one on job research. We, again, don't guarantee employment, but we do offer the skills. How to prepare for an interview, how to dress for success for the interview. Change your ringtone so that you can get the call, the callback for an interview, as well as we help with creating resumes. And then we do mock interviews. So when you come to our program, even if you just want to use the computers for job research, you will have to do a one week of training. But we actually have a handshake, but we work with you on those skills. And then we actually will also offer a clothes closet. In the clothes closet, if you stick with our program for six or eight weeks, do that program, you actually get two outfits, and you get a portfolio with your resume, copies of your application, your two outfits, and also we have, we'll help you schedule call for appointments, schedule appointments. And then after that, we have a 30, 60, 90 day follow-up. After 30 days, we're going to follow up with you. 60 days, we're going to follow up with you. 90 days, we're going to follow up with you, just to see what your success rate is. How are you, how are you with your job search? What's going on with you? Then you can actually come back to the program two hours within a day, each day. And you can come back and use the, use the computers, and we'll help with the job search. So we, again, I have to reemphasize, we do not guarantee jobs. But we guarantee the skills that is needed for you to have a good interview. And so those are some of the things that are really needed, that we've been told. The youth program, the youth mentoring program, Stairway to Success, that program, we're going to work with the young men. Those, like I said, those will actually be working with them. I'll be working with the young ladies. We're going to also introduce teen mothers chores, that's for teens that are pregnant or have, already have babies. And this program offers up to two years of college conferences. And basically, you sign a contract that you're not going to have any more children as a teenager, but you're going to basically concert your efforts toward continuing your education. So these are just some of the things we have. One of the things I would like to ask the council, if it so pleases you, is with our youth program, our youth mentoring program, there's three things that they're going to have to do to be in our program and to stay in our program. One, they're going to have to sign a contract. After they sign the contract of commitment, we're asking for the young people to attend a city council meeting to see how, how the laws are made in your city. Attend a county commissioner meeting. Also, attend a school board meeting. That's mandatory. Also, you're going to have to get letters of references, because we want you to get used to doing that. As well as, they have to come up with a project that they're going to work with in the city of Pelham, that they can find one area that's feasible, possible, set the goal, and then find support, of course, with the help of the center, for one project to be developed by the city. And this is something they have to do to complete the program. And once they complete that, we will do a graduation cookout. And we, the first thing we're going to do is introduce to them a cap and gown, and let them know, this cap and gown is your goal. And so that's a part of our, our program that we're offering. There's a whole lot much more involved. We're also going to do some things in the community. We're asking your help, because we will need donations for the clothes closet in order for them to actually be able to go to the clothes closet and get out two outfits that will prepare them for the interview. I've talked with someone in Okinas. They told me that they have some jobs that's going to be opening up pretty soon, within the next six to eight weeks. And it would be wonderful for them to get those employees right here at a Pelham. And they need those soft skills. So we'll be offering customer service skills, telephone efficacy, how to change your email address so that it would be appropriate if someone want to send your email. So all of those type of things, that we, like, again, we don't guarantee. But one of the things that we want to do is be able to show you how you can take those transferable skills and place them on the resume where they look good on paper, and the employee want to call you back. So we are asking and soliciting your help. We are nonprofit, so everything we do is by donation, everything we do is out of pocket. So again, I'm the director, the visionary, so to speak. Louis Stevens is our Stairway to Success. He is our mentor for the men. I'm the mentor for the young ladies. Jamisha Dunbar, who's also going to be, is one of our success programs already. She's working on her GED, as well as already has some computer and technology skills. She knows how to repair computers, which that's one thing I also know how to do. Maisha, she's going to, our training coordinator, so she'll be one of the ones that we're doing some of the training, as well as also our research developer, because we are looking and searching for grants. And there are several grants available for us. We have also Tina, Tina Butler. She's a resident of Mitchell County, because she's there in Camilla. So she's also our office assistant, and she's also a trainee. Everyone that's sitting here are all volunteers, and they have to, had to go through the program. So it took us three weeks of delay because they actually had to go through the training. We also have Ashley. Ashley's another one of our success stories, where she's learning typing skills. She's learning telephone efficacy, she's learning, so she's volunteering, but she's actually going through the program as well. Also, we have Mrs. Sandra Glossa, who's also military. So she, she's, when she's not off in the, um...
Air Force?
She's Air Force. So, so she's here with us as well. So she also is one of the work skills counselors. We have two others. We have an executive assistant, and we also have another work skills counselor, that's my backup. So this is what we're doing. And so we're asking for your support. If you see us with a flyer out, and we are, we are doing, we call street ministry. So you might see us with our flyers out, walking around in the communities, going to the businesses, just to introduce who we are and what we are, so.
How did it go today? How did the open house?
The open house went very well. We didn't have a lot of foot traffic. We did have a lot of phone calls, and we had a lot of inquiries. We will be meeting with the school board, with the superintendent and his administrative staff on Friday. We did meet with Ms. Drag today. She's the parenting mentor coordinator. So one of the things we do plan on doing is being very available in the school system. We'll be working with the young ladies, middle school and high school. Originally, we were looking at 14 to 18-year-olds, but we have, we had a 12-year-old to drop by. And we realized she needs our services. So now we're looking at middle school. So we're going to meet with all the principals on Friday. So we want to be certainly very visible within the school system as well.
Do you have a Facebook page?
Yes, we're creating one. I don't know if it's actually up and running just yet, but we are.
That would probably have the donations that you need for clothing. People respond to that.
Okay, okay. So we did do Facebook for us, letting them know the grand opening. So we did get some responses, but I'll definitely use that too, to get the donations.
The Chamber of Commerce, that one?
Yes, I met with Ken. He was one of the first ones that I met when I came out about a month ago. So he has been very, very helpful.
Yeah, he called me, was looking for space, and then.
Yes, uh-huh. And I want to, I want you to understand, Pelham, really, you have really been wonderful to us. I mean, when I tell you... to us, I mean, when I tell you the city has really been overbackless to help us with everything that we've needed, and if it hadn't not been for their generosity, we wouldn't be able to be here. So hats off to you, because you really welcomed us with open arms.
We want you here.
We wanna be here. And so, and the program that we have for the young, the youth, the mentoring program, Mr. Walker had to leave earlier, I'd love you to meet him, he's a success story, he's pretty soon his program in Thomasville, but he's, he's actually one, he's done some time in prison, he's working with the Boys and Girls Club, he's working with the Rotary, and his program is very, very successful, and he talks one-on-one, and now his program, he doesn't have enough mentors, and we will be looking for mentors, so we need men. I can, I can, I have two sons and I have two daughters, but if it hadn't not been for my husband, they, I don't think they would have turned out as well as they have. My nineteen-year-old is over in Afghanistan, even now as we speak, so we have wonderful sons, but I'm great with the young ladies. Made a lot of mistakes over the years, but been vindicated, and so, but I work very well with the young people, and those are some of the things, to say it's okay, it's not where you start, but it's where you end, and those are the kind of messages that we wanna convey over to all the young people.
We stand ready to help any way we can, and as far as ideas for the children to do, for the kids to be doing, as far as projects in town, Doug can hand you a list anytime.
Okay, and we actually, and we actually want the list, and that was one of the things I was gonna solicit, we want the list, something that will, is definitely feasible, and we can possibly work with a hands-on organization to, because they will come and actually help, we just have to organize it. So I would love for a list for them to select as a group, and then, as a group, then they select it, then they have to come back, a part of the program is, they have to come back and present their program to you, their project to you, and they're gonna have to learn how to sell their project. So these are some of the things, because our goal is to actually build leaders. The last part of the program, and I'm gonna sit down, is, the last part of the program is, we would love to take them as a culmination, a completion of the program, is allow them to go to a trip to Atlanta, to possibly a general assembly meeting, to see how they do the lobbying there, to also visit a college, and so that would be, and again, because everything right now is out of pocket, we're waiting on grants, but in the meantime, I just believe if it's God's will, it's God's will, that's just my personal opinion. That's the preacher in me, I wanna hear an amen from the council. But that would be the culmination of the program, because if we can expand their horizon, they can really see what goes beyond it. Is it fail-proof? Well, probably, we're gonna, probably it's gonna be an uphill journey, an uphill battle, but I believe in speaking to a mountain and move versus trying to climb it. So if I can just have those that are interested in working with us with this, whatever you could do to solicit, we're gonna have a clothes drive, so we will need gently worn professional clothes, because whether the young men come through or the young women, we want them to be able to go to a clothes closet, pull out two outfits that's presentable enough for an interview. And I would love to partner with Okinas and probably some of the other industries around this area, that they'll come here first looking for those employees. I believe we can do it.
It sounds like the doors are opening already, I hope they keep on opening, and the fact that you're proximity to the Boys and Girls Club right in the next two, that's tremendous.
Yes, and the program is a handshake, so once the first group goes through our program, their job is to go handshake with another, another person, and then bring them and introduce them to the program and make a recommendation. So these are skills that you're gonna learn throughout business, is making recommendations and writing a lot of recommendations, why would you recommend this person to the program? But I do have business cards, so I'm not sure where I would be.
Come on, you can do that.
All right. Okay, thank you very much. And this is just a copy of the intake packet, it's very intensive, it's not designed for them, I only brought one with me, and if you wanna go through it, it's not designed for them to do by themselves, again, it's for us to hold their hands as they go through the entire program, so that's why we have our work skills counselors, they will actually go through and actually walk them through the process, and the purpose is to do the training, when they come through our program, you have to dress business casual, I'll bring another card. You have to dress business casual, and if you don't have it, then that's where our clothes closet will come in.
We appreciate you coming, glad you're here tonight, glad you're here, and call on us anytime.
Okay, sure will, thank you.
Anybody else here? Oh, okay. All right. Everybody should have, everybody should have the minutes from our prior meetings, the July eighteenth meeting, and y'all are welcome to stay if you'd like, but you certainly won't have to.
And one other thing too, we do have an entrepreneur program as well, so we'll be doing that for the young people as well, it's a program by the federal government, and it's called a minor own business, and so it's actually a program that's actually worked in the schools, so the little girls that like the bright hair, we can actually show them how to turn that into a business. So that's a program that we also offer as well. Okay, all right, thank you, Senator.
Attachment A, the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to... Motion by Councilman Davis.
Mayor, the only one on the Better Hometown, it says August eighteenth and twentieth, and I'm sure they meant to put eighteenth through twentieth for the foods presentation.
Okay, would you like to second that, would that change?
I will.
All right, here for the discussion. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Excuse me, financial statements, close out of fiscal year 2011, and then have a reservation attachment B, to amend the 2011 budget. I will read the resolution, whereas on May seventeenth, two thousand and ten, the city of Pelham adopted a budget for the fiscal year 2011, and whereas the budget included funding for the departments listed on attachment A and attachment B, whereas the city, the Pelham mayor and city council have determined it is appropriate to amend the final budget in accordance with proper governmental accounting and financial reporting practices, and whereas funds are available in the operating account as designated, requested action, requested action. Now therefore, we have resolved by the Pelham mayor and city council, this fifteenth day of August 2011, that the amendments listed in attachment A and attachment B to the fiscal year 2011 budget right here by our doctor.
Remember we adopt the resolution. Second it.
All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Please need also to let and approve the July statements.
Excuse me.
Close out the fiscal year twenty, the July statement. Need a motion on that as well.
Wait, did we vote on, did I call for a vote on that last? Did we have a motion to second to adopt the resolution? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, we'll go back now, need to entertain a motion to...
I'll make the motion to adopt the July budget as presented, July financial, I should say. Give me the word. I'll second.
Second by Councilman Clinton, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you.
For the record, we did close out the fiscal year overall under budget, so we did have some departments that we went over in budget, most of that was due to the SPOs money that we went ahead and spent in some areas and all, and the way some of the grants came in, overall, we were under budget considerably for that year.
That's good. Moving into citizens delegation, Mitchell County Development Authority, Paige is not here, James, did you say you were there? Did you say that?
No, I said...
You didn't, I'm sorry, I'll do it, I'll do it.
I'd emailed you last week the minutes, and an email from Paige, explaining why she couldn't be here tonight, upsetting you on some of the programs they're working on.
Her minutes or them, we'll hear it sitting off, for those who might read, we don't have them here.
Unfortunately, due to other prior commitments and the practice for the play, all that, her representatives are not present, but I did put on your desk in front of you the, either the minutes from the last meeting or a report from that.
Call on Mayor Corchon to highlight some things for the Better Hometown.
I'll go ahead and do that for the Better Hometown. I see in her report here that we have successfully completed our certified local government application, so we will be, I know we've been working on that for quite some time, that will be moving forward. The other mention here is the excitement in the Better Hometown program about the streetscape continuation that's coming up, we're certainly getting ready to move forward with that, and everyone's excited about having another opportunity with that grant money coming in for us. And of course, the last thing, and probably most important, is the play that is, this, well, it's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, and unfortunately, Thursday night is already sold out, so I encourage everybody to hurry up and get their tickets for Friday and Saturday night. It will be in the historic Hand Building over here, and it's a dinner theater, so dinner and the show will be provided, and it'll be starting at seven o'clock. There are tickets for sale, I know with the Chamber, and I have some over at Family Bank, and I know the Better Hometown director has some, probably here at City Hall, so please keep that in mind, this is gonna be a great event, wonderful time to get out in the city of Pelham and have a nice meal and show and, you know, have something to do here, and it's also, all the proceeds from this will be benefiting the local community with projects Better Hometown does, so it's a great project.
Anybody near and dear to us, the Senate, that we would know?
I, you know, the name of it's fools, and there's only, only one that may be here to...
Oh, Jimmy's in.
But we do have one of the actors right here on the city council, so you have any more encouraging words to...
I cannot be identified in that play. My costume was that good, it's all right.
But it is an excellent opportunity, so do, get with me if you need some tickets. And, let's see, I think that should do it for the Better Hometown.
All right, thank you. We've got the report for the Chamber of Commerce, I'll mention a few things on this, he writes that the auction for the arts was a success, had a good attendance for that at the Hand Building, they're accepting applications for art photography show, which will take place just before the Wildlife Festival. Categories include two-dimensional, three-dimensional, photography, digital, decorative, and culinary this time, culinary is a new part, a new category this year, has not been part of it before. There's more information here at City Hall on this, but awards range from twenty-five dollars to three hundred dollars, and entry fees from twenty dollars to fifty dollars. Wildlife Festival, October the first, is coming up, we're working on that, we'll have a street dance with Heather Ireland and Poplar Road from six to nine that night. He mentioned this at the board meeting the other day at the chamber, that the Lions Club is no longer active in Pelham, though one of the most popular aspects, and also went to supporting twenty-five hundred dollars worth of scholarships, was the sale of their birthday calendar, so he has contacted the Lions Club members, and the chamber is going to take that project over and continue to try to fund those scholarships. He also asks for people to please, if you have any old pictures of past Christmas parades in Pelham, to take them or drop them off and make copies and send them to Kent, because this is the fiftieth anniversary of our Christmas parade this year. So, that's the report for the Chamber of Commerce. Mitchell County Joint Development Authority, Jimmy, do you want to hit on anything there?
Joint Development Authority met last week, I trust Doug, you did send that to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, everybody's got those minutes, we've got a few potential clients.
Andrew.
Okay, we've got a few potential clients that are looking at possibility of renting, but none of them have, I guess, pursued to a point where we can feel like it's solid. We've got several events coming up, reunions, wedding receptions and things like that, that are renting to Adrian, and we also, of course, will be building that age, we've got maintenance issues going on, but trying to be as frugal as we can with those and be good stewards of the money that we do have.
There was a fiftieth high school reunion there Saturday night, there was something going on at the Nathaniel Thomas's Depot, there was something going on at the Pelham Depot, and the jamboree was going on, it looked like the Wildlife Festival downtown, Doug said, and the auction going on, so it was busy downtown Saturday night. School is back in session, I don't have anything from the school board, are you Doug?
I'm sure they'd want us to announce, though, the first football game leaves this Friday night, and Camilla against Fayetteville, so they're keeping football off nights.
Before we move on, Mayor, could I have something, since Randy came in late, poor Dan has to slip out since he's gotta go early in the morning, he mentioned that we could have a public hearing, just by displaying these redistricting maps out in the lobby, and we wouldn't actually have to call a meeting like that.
That's correct, that's what Danny can be doing.
With a comment box?
With a comment box, to be available out there, so people can write a comment, or even like give you a comment on the maps, before you would adopt one. And Randy, I don't know if you've looked at this or not, but it's my understanding that they need to have a public hearing, and then at their next regularly scheduled council meeting, they would adopt the map, and then at the second regularly scheduled council meeting, they could adopt it a second time, and then they're available to go to the Department of Justice, is that the way you understand it?
That's my interpretation. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Administration Committee and Councilman Parker.
We have the police, fire department, and the code enforcement, nothing to really kind of stick out other than the report from the code enforcement, it's a nice report that we've done, citing the pedo's license, all of them, I mean, denied, I mean, pending inquiries. Listed on their yard sales, all the violations. Second page, junk vehicles removed, violation of animal codes, sign ordinances.
I asked on that sign, is that some of the ones that DOT that requested we move, or is this something that...
No, this is in addition to that.
Wow. There, I think, some of our posted signs that are actually staple on light bulb, which has an ordinance against stapling signs on light bulbs.
Very nice detail.
It is a nice report.
The limited agreement between Mitchell County and Mitchell Health Facility.
Listen, whenever we're session.
Bob John is aware that the last page, the signature page.
We need to...
DeCager County. They were going to email me the page to replace this page, they have DeCager County border conditions instead of the city of Pelham, but he is aware of that, I said he's going to send a new signature page to take place of that, but nothing on this page has to do with the agreement really for highlighting any of the conditions or anything.
Make a motion, we'll approve this agreement.
And Randy, opinion on this, you've had a chance to look over this Georgia Pines agreement?
Yes, similar, just like one we've had in prior years.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting this, please raise your hand. Thank you.
And next, we have a point to the Mitchell County Recreation Commission, I'd like to make a motion that we want our city manager for the term.
It's only five years. Second.
Second by Councilman Davis, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
I think that's not the disappointing council.
And next, we have a specific alcohol, memory permit for... And next, we have, uh, special event alcohol, remember to permit for Pelham Better Hometown.
In fact, it's not here, do you want me to speak to this, or do you wanna speak to it, Doug, what this is about? Or do we just wanna go ahead, and the council will discuss this in the work session, I'm sure, I'm sorry I missed it, so...
Yeah, well, Better Hometown will be applied to the state of Georgia for a special event, free day permit to allow them to, to sell alcohol. The state of Georgia, before approving it, you know, your local government has to, has to prove it, so this letter will be stating that we approve it, makes application then to the state, the ATL, and market revenue, and they'll get their free day event license from the state. Of course, this again is for fundraising purposes, not for any other purpose.
I can motion, we approve this permit for the free day event for Better Hometown.
I'll say.
Okay, just second, I'm here for two, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, thank you.
And last, but not least, the South of Georgia Regional Commission, the redistricting contract requires motion to approve between the city and South of Georgia Regional Commission and City of Pelham for technical assistance in the redistricting process. I make motion to approve this contract for redistricting.
I'll say. We've already got the maps now, we'll probably save some. That's my dad was waiting around.
I think he's just big Bobby, just like.
There's nothing on it about copyright.
Any other discussion, Dan, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, thank you. All right, Public Works Committee, uh, Councilman Davis.
Okay, I don't have a thing that I have, it's the Spence Road Improvement, and, uh, for those who, uh, don't know about it, the Spence Road, uh, two point seven eight miles Spence Road is located, uh, within City of Pelham. The county poses widen and resurface the total distance of the two point seven eight miles without, uh, twenty twelve LMID funds. The city of Pelham will repay the county for the cost of widening and resurfacing the point five three mile section of Spence Road that's within the city limits of Pelham during two thousand and twelve, when you have the new SPOSS fund available for such a purpose. The cost of the point five three section, then the city is estimated to be seventy-one thousand dollars, and we'll work out a payment schedule, where Pelham pays so much per month until you have repaid it, and, uh, this is gonna require also a motion to approve it, and, uh, I make the motion that we go ahead with that, so it's gonna look sort of strange to have resurfaced road ending at city limits, so... And we have an opportunity, it's time to do it for seventy-one thousand dollars, it's quite a bit.
Is that going to Canaline Road, or is that where?
Yeah. And, and I just feel like it's, uh, worth the money, that should be good.
Were you making a motion, I just wanted to know, I think we talked about some, uh, extra work needing to be taken care of on that road, drain, uh, cross drain.
Is that culvert where that little small creek runs, yeah?
That's not including this, right, it's just for the resurfacing.
That's gonna include work on that as well.
Okay.
Culvert, so there's a widening in that area, put a little bit larger culvert in there, probably some riff raft and that sort of thing. You know, we're gonna address that at the same time.
I know the, uh, schools, um, put in a sidewalk, and we hoping that once they do the final work on the resurfacing, that they will kind of like line that sidewalk over the troncated dome that's down, because they're kind of offset, I get the, it's probably not right on there. I'm trying to get it right. I know... Not real wheelchair, just, uh, blind person, that's your fault across street.
Yeah, I'm sure that's not gonna be an issue, that's, uh, certainly be, thank you, same, uh, be ashamed not to, so...
There was a motion, Doug, motion that you...
I made a motion.
All right, it is.
I'm second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. I think the motion passes. Uh, Doug, City Manager's report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just, uh, everyone that's, that's watching or read the article in the newspaper, we will be displaying the options for the redistricting, uh, having a wall in City Hall tomorrow, and, uh, invite everyone to please come by and, uh, share your opinion, and, uh, any questions you may have, these are, these are very good maps, and it's, they're easy to read and learn a lot from them, and, and certainly the, the city council needs, uh, everyone's input before they make the decision on, on which one of these options to go with, and, again, everyone, please come to City Hall, and we will set up the, uh, the four boxes or a box, so you can put your choice in there, and be anonymous, they don't have to, uh, put their name on the little unofficial ballot, it's a good way to, uh, to learn, so... Anyone with any questions about it, please, please see me, we also have a PDF format that we can, uh, email to anyone that's interested in it, look at it at home, so please get in touch with us. Unless there's any questions, that's all I, I had to share tonight.
Any other questions for Doug? Uh, City Attorney?
I don't have anything, uh...
I don't have anything, other than just, again, I'm very grateful for, uh, community outreach coming tonight, I'm glad they were able to come, and, and just a big plug for them, any support anyone can give to, uh, to that organization, it sounds like a tremendous asset to Pelham. I'm very thankful that they're here, and I'm grateful to Kent Holtscall, who's not here, but I will say Kent really worked hard on finding the location, and worked with Doug, and, and glad that that worked out for them to stay here.
So they're right by the Boys and Girls Club. They're in the building right next to the little greenhouse area.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, but they're, I mean, same lot. They're right in there together.
I got one question for Chief, uh, I'd like to know how the sidewalk working at the school, the traffic, uh, through traffic.
This could be much better for us, I think here the football season is really gonna count.
It really is attractive.
It is, of course.
All right, I'm looking at a motion to the chair.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second by Councilman Davis, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you.